The Missoula County Board of Trustees. We have in attendance all the trustees except the chairman, Marsha Holland. And I am acting-
Trustee Elliot Dugger.
And trustee Elliot Dugger. And I'm acting chairman, vice chairman, Diane Lorenson. So first we'll do the pledge of allegiance. Okay, under agenda item three, we review, revise and approve the agenda. Does the superintendent have any suggestions? Does any trustee have any suggestions to review or revise the agenda? Okay, so do we need a motion to approve? Okay, so the agenda's approved. Under agenda item four, we need to approve the minutes from the regular meeting on June 12, 2018, which are in page 14 of your packet. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? That's not page 14.
They're page five.
Oh, you're right. Thank you. Page five. Is that what you're waving your arm for?
Uh, no.
Okay. Page five. Are there any corrections or additions to those minutes? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve the minutes? A move by trustee Wake, second by trustee Kendall. Any public, any board discussion? Any public comment? Okay, all trustees in favor of approving the regular board meeting minutes from June 12, 2018, please raise your hand. And that is unanimous to all trustees present. Item five is public comment. This is a time when we have public comment on non-agenda items. It's limited to three minutes per speaker, and the speaker must be cautious not to infringe on the privacy of another person. Do we have any public comment? Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Melanie Charleston, president of Missoula Education Association, first vice president in Montana Federation of Public Employees. I just have some brief public comment to share with you. This item I'll probably bring up throughout the summer and into the fall, right up through the election season, because I think it's a really crucial item that you'll see on your November ballot that hopefully we'll get some conversation going and get this passed. It is the six mil levy. The six mil levy was initiated in 1948 in the state of Montana to provide consistent funds to our members in higher education, to provide education for all Montanans. So that six mil levy is up for renew. It is up for renew every 10 years, and for 70 years, Montanans have indeed passed that six mil levy. That six mil will provide roughly $20 million to the university system, and as you know, levies are for learning, so that will go strictly into the educational programs, not for operational or budgetary costs. And it is not an increase, so it is a consistent, it is simply reaffirming that same six mils. So certainly want to get the word out about that and start educating our voters to make certain that they are aware of what that means on the ballot. I will not be around a lot this summer. It is the summer of union work. I travel Friday to the National Education Association Representative Assembly with two other delegates from Missoula Education Association, Catherine Malou and Charlie Struna, both out of Meadow Hill, will accompany me. We'll be gone for eight days of National Education Association work, where we will, I assume, debate multiple topics on national issues. Certainly will more than likely put the NEAs viewpoints on our current situation with the children at the border. So I will have, give you some updates when I return. However, you will have that meeting on July 10, I believe, so yes, I can give you an update then, and then I'll get on a plane the next morning for the AFT in Pittsburgh and kind of do the same thing all over again. So, happy summer. Thanks.
Thanks, Melanie. Is there any other public comment on non-agenda items? We'll move on to agenda item six, that are community connection. And this is the Zero Waste Committee, represented by Katie Anderson and Jeremy Drake. Do you want to-
Quickly.
Go.
Thank you. So it's my pleasure tonight to introduce an Energy Corps partner, Katie Anderson. Katie's been working with Home Resource and with Missoula County Public Schools, of course, the last year, on our Zero Waste Initiative. And I want to wish her well as she concludes her term and moves on to grad school. Katie's been a great asset to us, and you'll see in just a moment from the presentation that the work product is significant and certainly appreciated. And accompanying her tonight is Jeremy Drake from Home Resource. And as we talk about the Zero Waste Initiative, you might recall, public comment about, almost two years ago, we had a member of SAVE, Students Against Violating the Environment, who approached the trustees with a request that we embark on a zero-waste initiative. The city of Missoula had just undertaken such a project, and he felt it important that Missoula County Public Schools do the same. At that point in time, we had some initial conversation about, rather than reinventing the wheel, aligning with the city's zero-waste initiative and taking advantage of the research and the community capacity to consider zero waste. So we have some members of the committee who are in the room tonight. Kim Johnson from Franklin has been very engaged. Hatton sat in on the committee, as did trustee Smith and I. And it was lively and, I think, very timely conversation. And I think you'll be pleased with the report, and then the challenge upon acceptance of that report, is to identify some tangible goals and action items that we can work on as we really begin this journey. So with that, I'd invite Katie and Jeremy to present to the board.
Thank you for that kind introduction, Superintendent Thane. We've been grateful for your leadership throughout this process so far. Again, my name is Katie Anderson. I have, I am the Energy Corps service member, serving with Home Resource and Missoula County Public Schools. And again, I'm with, I'm here with Jeremy Drake, our community engagement manager. I'm here to talk with you all about zero-waste planning in Missoula and how we are working to integrate the schools into that process. There we go. So we'll provide some background to the board on zero waste, in general, on what zero waste means for Missoula and for Missoulians. Then we'll jump into the zero-waste planning that has, that we've undertaken with the school district in this school year, which has involved a steering committee and input from students, and has ultimately helped generate a zero-waste plan. From there, we'll highlight top priorities from the plan, what are some key goals we can start working towards, and then think about those tangible steps to start, start putting some of these into action.
Thanks, Katie. Which button? This one? There we go. Okay. Good evening, everybody. I appreciate you, Superintendent Thane, giving a brief background on the context that this is coming from. I'm going to dig a little deeper into that, just so you have a broader view of where zero waste is coming from in the community and who the players have been so far. So up here on the screen, back in 2014, it really started with the city of Missoula in conjunction with a group of citizens who are now considered Climate Smart Missoula. They convened the Second Community Climate Summit, where they identified 12 different focus areas for a community conversation. And one of them was called the Three Rs Bucket, and it was reduce, reuse, recycle. So there is a small and very engaged group at that summit that talked about waste in Missoula, and that's really where the first, the time, first time that the zero-waste concept emerged. And people were like, oh yeah, well, if we, if we rally around this idea of zero waste, then we can address all the things that we're talking about, like construction and demolition debris being such a huge piece of everything that we throw away, more than twice as much as the stuff we throw away on a day-to-day basis in our lives. And food scraps being a big chunk of what we throw away in our daily lives. If we, if we embrace this idea of zero waste, we can address a lot of those things. So Home Resource, there were two people, well, at that point, I was not with Home Resource yet, but Katie Dool from Home Resource was in that group, and we quickly realized, okay, this is something that Home Resource could move forward. So we talked for a year. Eventually, in that time, I came on board, and then we, this group, we like say, it went from a bucket to a bathtub. Over that year, a lot of people jumped on board, a lot of people were getting involved, and we decided that this was bigger than a bucket. In Climate Smart Missoula, it became its own thing called Zero Waste Missoula. And we set a goal to draft and have the city council adopt the Missoula Zero Waste Resolution. And so that's what happened. In February 2016, the city adopted the goal to reduce Missoula's solid waste by 90% by the year 2050. And the day after that, Home Resource launched our Zero Waste Ambassadors Program, which we've also been working with. Katie has been helping work with the teaching and learning staff at MCPS to get integrated into more 5th grade classrooms. It's a education program. Kids learn about reuse. It's, we call it an educational adventure into reuse and other R words. They learn about what it means to, what zero waste is, what it means, and what the actions we can take to become zero-waste ambassadors in our community. And so that was a nice little moment for zero waste in Missoula. We then initiated, with the passage of the resolution, the city initiated a planning process, similar to what Katie's going to talk to you about within MCPS. And the city asked Home Resource to be on the leadership team. So we worked with city staff, Chase Jones, namely. We held community listening sessions, and during that time, that's when Superintendent Thane came into the conversation. Mayor Angan convened a meeting between the leadership team, Superintendent Thane, and we kind of planted the seeds for what has developed into this partnership. Over the ensuing year, 2017, and into the early part of this year, we worked on the plan with the city, drafted the plan, and also in that time period is when Katie came on board, and we started this process of planning for MCPS zero-waste modeled after what we had just done in the city. And so that process began in earnest in January of this year, and here we are now. Whoa. And interestingly, this plan is coming to you before the final plan is going to city council for the city. So it's modeled after that plan. It uses the same framework, and it's just, this has been, this process has been very efficient, and I also appreciate your leadership, Superintendent Thane, in helping to facilitate that and make it happen. So I'm going to let Katie take it from here, and she's going to explain to you the process and the outcomes.
As Jeremy mentioned, we began our zero-waste planning with the school district in earnest in January of this year. Until that point, or up until that point, I was really focused on researching waste in schools and why, why zero waste should matter to a school district. So public schools are among the largest waste generators in any given city, county, or state. We, I came up with an estimate for the waste stream of MCPS from this year, based on research from other K-12 districts and what we do here in Montana. And that's an estimate of about 755 tons of waste from daily operations alone in this past school year. Just a pretty big number, but I think the silver lining in this is that a lot of school waste streams can be recycled or composted and don't have to go to a landfill. And that, in part, comes from, was reinforced by a New York City Waste Characterization Study of Public Schools, just released in the past year, that provides the most comprehensive data on school waste that I have come across. So we see lots, about 35% recyclables, and over half of all the school's waste being materials suitable for composting. So in that, there's a lot of opportunity, I think, for a zero-waste initiative, and there's certainly a lot of avenues we can take to improve programs that are already happening and cut down on, on the amount of waste we are wasting and sending to the landfill. So zero waste provides opportunities for the district to save money and streamline operations. It provides opportunities for students to learn about materials and engage in STEM learning, and it provides an opportunity for our city, for our schools to connect with our city and to be supportive of our community. So from there, again, kind of modeled on the process that happened with the city, we wanted to kind of get into the schools a little bit and see what students might have to say about a potential zero-waste initiative in their district. So this January and February, Jeremy and I went to three of the four high schools and held student listening sessions, hosted at Sentinel and Hellgate by their environmental clubs. And we asked students, do you care about reducing waste? What would zero waste even look like in our schools? And what could students do to play a role in this effort? So from there, we got a lot of student feedback, about 50 students participated, and you see some of the student priorities that rose to the top of their, of how they see, saw the plan. We strove to keep involving students in the planning process by inviting them to participate in the Zero Waste Steering Committee. So with our steering committee, we convened about 20 people total in the whole, in the course of the past four months, five months, including high school students that, four high school students that were present, or high school students were present at every meeting, four of those total. So we had, on our committee, we had Superintendent Thane, a couple trustees members, individuals from operations and maintenance, principals, teachers, and additional school staff. We aimed to provide the steering committee with draft and research recommendations for a zero-waste plan, and then to hear what the committee has to say, had to say about practicability of such a plan, what would be the barriers, and what could be some potential solutions. And then they helped provide input on the final of documents that we have put together for the plan and for some supporting materials. So using our, our background knowledge of waste in schools, and what we heard from students, and what we worked through with the steering committee, we came up with the final zero, MCPS Zero by Fifty Zero-Waste Plan, again, based on the city's framework. I will highlight the, that framework with the pathways to zero waste. The city identified four pathways to zero waste, including access, infrastructure, education, and policy. And we drafted objectives and action items for each of those pathways to get us at or near zero waste moving forward. In addition, we compiled a set of supporting appendices, not, we haven't provided them all yet, but they're ready to be shared as necessary. We have documentation of the process, the planning process to date, as well as some documents detailing committee-generated strategies for implementation and some potential next steps forward. So that's a lot of planning, a lot of documents, a lot of things to think about in terms of waste, but what are, what are the top priorities that we've pulled out? They're summarized up here on the board. To evaluate capacity for this initiative, to rethink materials acquisition, to implement comprehensive recycling and composting, to transition to using durables in cafeterias in MCPS schools, to implement programs to reduce wasted food, and to make sure that whole district education for zero waste remains a priority throughout this initiative. Moving forward, we have begun considering how to get from a plan with a bunch of objectives and actions and goals into something that we can start making progress on as soon as next, as the next school year. I will highlight two additional, two additional appendancy materials that we helped to create with the steering committee in particular. Our committee generated lists of strategies, outputs, and outcomes for each of the top priorities listed in the previous slide, and that provide a great framework for achieving those individual goals. I also pulled out specific actions and excerpts from the, our final zero-waste plan. That could be actions that could be done short-term with limited capacity, such as preparatory planning and getting the stage set for other things to happen. I'm again happy to provide, happy to go into more detail if that is interesting at this So again, I just wanted to say a big thank you to, thank you to all, to you all for having us this evening. Thank you to our steering committee members, especially those that are with us tonight and for their time and energy investments. A big thank you to all of the students who participated and for the leadership, again, of Superintendent Thane. And I want to thank you all for consideration of capitalizing on this opportunity to become Montana's first zero-waste school district and realize the economic, social, and environmental benefits of becoming a zero-waste district. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions for Katie or Jeremy? Mike?
Thanks, Katie. Thanks, Jeremy. I really appreciate all the work that you've done and the work that you put on this committee. I just wanted to add that it was truly enlightening for me, I mean, some of the research that you showed us on the committee, I learned an awful lot about why we should be concerned with this and how we can actually make some serious progress in, towards zero waste. And I, I think that, I guess what I just want to say is, I hope that we, as a board and as a district, don't let this end here, that we continue to move forward with this. I think it is truly important, and I do think that you do have a lot of supporters on this board and in this district, so I, I heartened and I'm looking forward to it. The other thing I guess I just wanted to add is how much I learned about the students and what they can do, and, and we're already in doing that in some of our classrooms. Thank you for your 5th grade class and all the work that you've done. But one of the things that I particularly learned is that bringing the students on and getting their help is, moves, seems to move the needle a lot quicker than just having it be a top-down. So having everyone involved, I think, was really important, and keeping those students involved and involving more as we move forward is going to be really good. So guys, thank you for your help, or for your work, I mean. Thank you.
Are there any more questions or comments? Grace?
I also want to say thank you so much for bringing this forward, pushing it as far forward this year as you've been able to. It's really remarkable, and I, when I was in high school, I started a school recycling program at my school, and that was in 1988. And we, you know, literally piled up paper in the closet and schlepped it to the recycling place ourselves, because our school didn't have one. That environmental organization, Lorax, is still going. But I will say that we really haven't come that far as a culture, as far as what kids are doing with recycling. A lot of kids around our district are still like hauling boxes of paper. And I think we, we need to enthusiastically continue to support measures to make this plan more than a dream, and I would love to see MCPS be in the lead, because the kids who are involved are going to be very enthusiastic about any efforts we can make. We need to not wait for the kids to lead. And in fact, many of the decisions that we can make as a district are, are going to come from what happens in the central office, putting the question of environmental responsibility first and foremost in our purchasing, because the kids, by the time the materials show up in their classroom and they're left to recycle it, it's already passed through the hands of many, many MCPS staff before it gets there. So, so we actually, at the admin and ops, thanks Burley, this is you, talking about in your whole zone, that's really where a lot of these decisions need to be pushed forward, and what this question needs to continue to be, to be something that we, we don't wait for the kids to be in the lead, because they'll run, but we need to, anyway. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Heidi?
I'm, I'm not sure who this question is for, so whoever knows the answer. City council did a zero-waste resolution. Would it be recommended that we do a resolution of that kind, or adopt a board policy or something like that, that would say that, you know, the, the board of MCPS supports doing this as a sort of guiding policy?
As you saw in the slides, Katie and Jeremy have put together a very nice packet of information. There's an executive summary, as well as the extended version that includes the appendices. They're not included in your packet. We'll make those available, and the intent would be to bring that forward at some point in time for adoption, and I think in the form of a resolution would be helpful. I think as we go through our goal-setting process for next year, it'll be critical for us to identify some of those actionable items, and as trustee Decker indicated, it could be a step similar to that which we took with Styrofoam. It's basically reducing or stopping the flow at the time of purchase. We have two members of the committee here, one a classroom teacher from a school that's working on a zero-waste initiative, and another from food service, and as you saw from the graphic, the food waste and the waste from the cafeteria tends to be about 50% of the waste that schools generate. So I think we've got some opportunities, and when we get to public comment, they may wish to contribute to that conversation.
If I may add, there is precedent for school district zero-waste policies and resolutions. I have a running list I could provide, but like Boston schools, schools in Washington, Oregon, California, it might not always be a zero-waste policy or zero-waste resolution, but those can show up in other sustainability initiatives or waste management practices. So there are lots of, there's lots of precedent and other models we could look to. That's the direction to go.
Any more board questions or comments? And is there any public comment? Anybody wants to add anything? Any of our visitors? Let me step forward, Mike.
I would just like to, my name's Kim Johnson, and I teach 5th grade at Franklin Elementary. And we had a fabulous year this year, spurred by ZWAP from Home Resource. We had lots of teaching materials, and then tied with our new IB units and Sharing the Planet, we talked about sustainability and the use of our resources with the kids. When they began to see things like Plastic Island, it became something bigger to them and what they wanted to be able to do. So as a classroom, we started working on what things we had control over, and when you're working with a group of 10 and 11-year-olds, it's not a lot that they actually have control over. So we, we were put in touch, again, through Home Resource, with Sean Doty with Missoula Compost, and he donated for the year a compost bin to our classroom. And then Brad, tell me Brad's last name, Brad Leighton from the university, saw our article in the newspaper and came by the school and said, he had a student that was working on, you know, that crinkly paper that doesn't recycle, that plasticky stuff off candy and things. He had a student that was using that to make some kind of a particle board, melting it down and putting it with wood chips to make a particle board. So he came and talked to the kids, and Sean came and talked to the kids. And so between him collecting that plastic for us and the compost bin that we had, the only thing that we would have in, in our garbage can at the end of the day was typically the, the milk curtains. And we knew, my teaching partner, Ray Bearlocker, and I knew that we had made it with the kids about halfway through the year, when one of the kids walked by the garbage can and leaned in and said, "Who threw the muffin away?" And picked it out of the garbage can with his bare hands and put it in the composter. You know, so the kids were making a big difference. When we went to the ZWAP, we take our lunches, and the goal is to always try and have a zero-waste lunch, and for a lot of our population, that's, that's kind of tough, because they're getting, you know, moms, dads are picking up Lunchables and quick, easy things off the counters, and this year, our class did a superb job. We had very little waste left from the lunch, and they were really proud of that, and they owned that. So it was really cool. I did give Mr. Thane a bad time about next year at CS Porter, because I told the kids, I said, "Every time you throw food away, you ask for the compost bin." So, you know, hopefully it's going to trickle upstream, right, as the kids grow through. But it's been a great year. But it's been a great year. We're looking to round it out and do as much if not more this coming year as well. So thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Any, anybody else? Here we go.
Hello. My name's Kimberly Carlson. I work in the kitchen at Hellgate. And I would just, I think this presentation's been great. They've been fantastic and you've been fantastic. It's been great, a great experience to hear all the input and things. And I would just, if I could inspire everyone to, to, to maybe move quickly. Because it, you know, like right now, I'm on, I'm on the ground in the kitchen and I see the, the decisions that are made, right? I handle them all the time. And I know that if, that then changes can be made now for September. You know, say for example, ketchup packets, right? You could put them in squirt bottles, things like that. That's a very, that's kind of getting in the weeds with all this, but that kind of stuff can really be changed right now, just like with Styrofoam. So I think a mission statement is really, really important, but maybe make some, if you can, make some decisions for some really tack, you know, tangible, quick choices that can be made that will make a big difference for things that go in the trash, so. Thank you.
Can I, can I make one more comment?
Hi, Jeremy Drake again with Home Resource. I just wanted to say, following up on Kim Johnson's comments, that this coming school year will be the first year that students in every grade in middle school may have been through this WAP program. So CS Porter's been on board all three years. So that means every, sorry. Franklin's been on board all three years. So every 5th grader that's been through Franklin the last three years and is now in CS Porter, that's the entire cohort of students that are now like have a sense of what this stuff is all about. And so middle school might be a really great place to try to implement some of this stuff so that there's some congruence in the students' lives where they're learning about it in 5th grade, then they move on to 6th grade and they say, "Oh yeah, this, this, this is actually happening around me. This actually can work." So just a thought, final thought there. Thanks a lot.
All right, thanks. And I guess we're going to let Grace ask a question of, of Kim from, from Hellgate?
Yes. Yeah, well, and it's, it's maybe a question for Kimberly, but it's maybe also a question for others too, which is, so how do we get those decisions made? I mean, if a part of this is empowering the people who know what needs to happen to say so. Because for example, when people came before the board a year ago and said, "Can we please stop using Styrofoam?" And the decision was made like that to do so, I think all of us up here were a little bit like, "Oh." Because some of the time, the people who know what those little in-the-weeds things are might not know that they can say something and affect change quite quickly sometimes, like remarkably quickly, because they may be waiting for it to come from elsewhere. And so my question is like, what are those things? Not to get too deeply into the weeds, but what's the channel? What's the process by which people who know can be empowered to connect and, and make the change?
And I think that's an excellent point. And I think number one, dissemination of the plan is going to be critical so that there's awareness across the district, not just with 5th graders that go through ZWAP or whatever, that this is a value and a priority. And then number two, establishing through focus groups or some other mechanism outreach and a way to gather that feedback so that we do hear about those things. Because I think too often times, we just simply aren't cognizant of it until someone does bring it to our attention. So I, I think that's part of our challenge is doing appropriate outreach.
List, you know, something practical or maybe another committee could be put together to, you know, again, to maybe list things that, you know, I can see the choices that they're making. I have a lot of other good friends that are in other districts in California and I know the choices they're making and they're buyers of products. So I know that our, the vendors that are, we're going to can, I think we can, I don't know if they're able to just put the squeeze on them, but I think there are a lot of vendors that would really, you know, they could either change, you say their ketchup, or I use that as an example. It's just that the buyers in the food service, they, you know, they've got a lot on their plate. That is a bad joke. But maybe they need some help making lists or, and, or it should be prioritized for them to, you know. I know that regarding ketchup, we had ketchup in squirt bottles and then the buyer for the school program, he went to a sanitary convention or something and he came back, he said, "Oh, we shouldn't be having individual ketchup bottles." But I, I would argue that that's not the case. I mean, would they have them before? And I don't think that's a whole standard across all school districts. I don't, you know, I think if, I mean, is that true? Let's find out. Because I just see handfuls of them going in the trash. And anyway, so my point would be if anybody needs a list, I have a phone number or I will be the thorn in someone's side about all this practical stuff. If, if something else comes up, I'll gladly weigh in on it, so thank you.
In regards to what happens next, as Superintendent Thane mentioned, we're losing Katie. However, we are partnering again with the district, Home Resource, we is partnering again with the district to host another Energy Corps member for the following year. And it will be a similar arrangement in that the Energy Corps member will be charged with being the lead coordinator and educator for ZWAP and carrying on with the zero-waste planning. So identifying what are the things that could be done? What are the research questions that need to be asked and figured out? And so the, there will be capacity for that moving ahead, starting in October.
Trustee Smith?
I'm glad you brought that up, Jeremy. That person's going to be busy, I think.
Okay. All right. Thank you to everybody on that. That was really interesting. Okay, item seven is our reports and announcements. These are information items and they're in your packet. We have the Health Insurance Trust Fund report from the month of May 2018. We have a written student trustee report from our Sentinel trustee for a year-end report and that's also in our packet. We won't read that. Item 7C, we have announcements from Superintendent Thane.
Thank you, and I'll be brief. There are a few items listed on page 38 in the packet. Again, a reminder that we have begun our summer hours, which means district 12-month employees are working from 7:00 AM until 5:30 PM, Monday through Thursday. Of course, the exception will occur next week, the Independence Day holiday on July 4th, all offices will be closed. We are scheduled for our next regular board meeting Tuesday, July 10th at 6:00 PM in this room. Ordinarily, we would have a second board meeting that would convene July 24th at 6:00 PM. However, it's our plan to cancel that meeting, so we'll have a single July meeting. Then we'll resume Tuesday, August 14th with the regular board meeting and we'll be fully immersed in budget adoption season at that point in time. Two other quick announcements. First, for those that were not present at the special meeting at 5:30, I'd like to extend a welcome to Sharon Sturbis, who will represent Target Range and the Bonner-Miltown area on the Board of Trustees. And this is the vacant seat and Sharon would be filling it for the remainder of this year and that seat will be up for election in May of 2019. So we appreciate Sharon offering her time and her energy and look forward to getting to know her and work with her. And second, we have made an offer to an individual to fill the position of principal at Lowell Elementary School. It's Barbara Frank. Barbara has served as principal at the Elysian School outside of Billings. It's an independent K8 school and she has also most recently served as a principal in the Belgrade School District. Contingent upon board approval at our next meeting, Barbara will be on board at Lowell and we're excited to have her. We had a number of staff members, again, continue to be engaged in summer professional development, a very large cohort last week at the Montana Behavioral Initiative sessions in Bozeman. And I think that one I highlight simply because beyond the days of workshop activity, it's a commitment to be away from your family for successive days. And I also know that Trustee Decker was a presenter at MBI and we appreciate the level of engagement, not only on the part of our district staff, but those people that make that training possible. Thank you.
Okay, at this time, it's appropriate for trustees to announce items of interest to them. Does anyone? Grace?
Thanks. I made an announcement about this about a year and a half ago and I thought that it was a good time to make another one. So recently, there's been a few incidents in the news of school districts around the country at which administrators have made it a practice to release information about students who may not be US citizens to the Immigration Service. And those students have been detained by ICE as a result of those releases. The superintendent of schools in Boston was actually reprimanded for doing so and removed from his position. The reason for that is that in the early 80s, a Supreme Court decision upheld the right of every child in the United States to receive a free and appropriate public education, regardless of their citizenship status. And since that time, it's been the practice of educators around the country to uphold that ethical and legal responsibility. And I'm pleased to say that it's also MCPS policy not to collect or release citizenship information about its students. So in case that was something that was unclear to anyone in the Missoula community, I just wanted to reiterate that it is both a Supreme Court decision, it is an ethical responsibility, and it is MCPS policy not to collect or release citizenship data about its students.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from trustees, announcements? I, I would just like to say, we started to get emails about signing up for the MTSBA conference, which is in Missoula this year right now. And Ann is the chairman this year, so I suggest everyone sign up early so that we...
After July 1.
That's pretty soon.
I know, but after July.
After July.
I already talked to her.
Okay, thanks. Okay, now we move on to the consent agenda. These are items that we see regularly that we, we don't typically discuss in the board meeting. The first item on the consent agenda is to approve MCPS student attendance agreements. We have two attached. These are for the period ending June 19th, 2018. So this is for the year that has ended. And the administration recommends that the trustees approve the attached list. Do we have any questions? Do we have a motion? To approve?
Yes.
Okay.
We approve the consent agenda.
Oh, I see. Never mind. Okay, we approve those together. The second item is to approve the revenue and expenditure reports. They're attached on page 41 in miniskill print. And I have a question. Can we get these electronically, like in a spreadsheet? Okay, so maybe I'll send you an email and you could email me that. Okay. Any other questions?
Was Katie's motion seconded?
No, because Superintendent Thane hit me on the head and said, "It wasn't time for a motion." So at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the full consent agenda, both items. So, so trustee Kendall has moved and trustee McDonald has seconded that we would approve the consent agenda. Any board comment? And we don't take public comment, right? Any public comment? All right. All trustees in favor of approving the consent agenda, please raise your hand. Grace? Okay, that's unanimous if all trustees present. Then we move into new business. Our, we have one item under new business and that is to approve a grant application summary and Superintendent Thane will explain that.
Thank you. We've had a conversation over the course of the last several months about an initiative to begin an early kindergarten program in Missoula County Public Schools. And as part of that, we are looking at a couple of funding sources, one being Title I and one being a request that I made to a private foundation. I wanted to diverge a little bit from a normal conversation in this regard, just to recap a little history. The request I submitted was to the Heman Foundation and a few years ago, I had the good fortune of making a connection with the Executive Director of the Heman Foundation when I was actually an ERD and we were looking at a credit recovery program. And I submitted a request that was funded. Ultimately, I got to know the Executive Director pretty well and subsequently, the Heman Foundation funded Middle School Project Lead the Way. And then went back, I guess in 2016, and issued a request for them to fund Project Lead the Way kindergarten through 5th grade across the district. And all those requests were funded. So far, in those requests, the Heman Foundation has granted the district $382,000. It's been significant. You might recall the most recent request, the K5 STEM request, was $250,000. And the Executive Director of the Heman Foundation, John Dairies, actually somewhat reluctantly came to the board meeting when we made the announcement. And the Heman Foundation is a foundation that largely flies under the radar. They're based out of the Bay Area and they were just making some of their first inroads into the Missoula area. And the reason I bring this up is John Dairies became a, a good friend, obvious supporter of Missoula County Public Schools. He had grandchildren here. This winter, as has been his, I'm going to backtrack. Last year, when he turned 80, he decided it was time to relinquish the role, which he did, but he remained on the board of the Heman Foundation. And as has been the practice, he and his wife went to Arizona this winter where he was diagnosed with an illness and he passed away early May. And Saturday was his memorial service. And I just want to recognize and appreciate John for his commitment. He served as Chair of the Health and PE Department at the University of Montana for a period of time, worked for DA Davidson, which is where he came in contact with Jane Heman and ultimately helped her set up her foundation. And they've supported a number of great causes. They helped provide nursing services at Lolo School District when the district could not afford to do so. They funded significant addition to Marcus Daley Memorial Hospital in Hamilton. They've been very generous supporters of Spectrum, which benefits students all across Western Montana, but specifically Missoula. And of course, $382,000 worth of support directly to Missoula County Public Schools. I made the request a couple of months ago and in the transition, as John passed and the board was somewhat reconstituted, it took a little bit of time, but they actually sent a check for $60,000 last week. So I have the check and I'm asking for retroactive approval of the grant application summary. Because of the lateness with Title I and a lack of approval, we have not yet moved forward on initiation of the early kindergarten program. However, based on some news of the last week, I'm optimistic that we will do so this fall. It would not likely be along the regular school calendar of August 27th, but we will begin some targeted recruiting and preparation and my hope is that we'll move forward with a mid-fall implementation. So we'll come forward again at another time with more details, but I just wanted to give that background on the grant application summary and again, express my appreciation to John and to the Heman Foundation and certainly encourage the board to support this grant request.
Okay, do we have any questions for Superintendent Thane? Do we have a motion to approve the grant application summary, a request?
Yes.
Moved by trustee Decker. Is there a second? Second by trustee Smith? Many board discussion? Grace?
I would add that this is not the first time the Heman Foundation has supported early childhood programming in our area as well. And what Superintendent Thane said is well-taken. They have flown under the radar and supported many, many initiatives in our area. We're, we're very fortunate to have their support.
Any other board comment or discussion? Any public comment? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All trustees in favor of approving the grant application summary, please signify by raising your hand. your hand. Thank you. Yes, this is an elementary action item, so elementary trustees only, please. And that is unanimous as to all elementary trustees present, which is all of us. Okay, then we'll move on to item B2, which is the approve the renewal of the Montana Quality Education Coalition membership. They have provided us with an invoice and superintendent...
B1.
Oh.
MTSBA.
Excuse me. So we're in the finance and operations, so we would approve renewal of the Montana School Board Association membership. And Superintendent Thane will explain that. The invoice is on page 51 of our packet. And I guess for public information, can you be sure and say the amount of the invoice?
I think we're all familiar with MTSBA, and I would indicate two compelling reasons for us to consider renewal. One, we participate in some MTSBA programs, particularly with insurance, that's important for us. And second of all, the president of MTSBA would be really distressed if we failed to pay our dues and continue our membership. So the... No pressure. The amount of the invoice is dependent on enrollment, and we have dues obligation of And again, I think it's money well spent, and certainly we could entertain any questions that might be on your minds.
Are there any questions for Superintendent Thane? Mike?
I guess just in the interest of open dialogue and discussion, and for any of the public that hears $17,919.30, I'll just add that whenever this comes up, it's always a big number, and it seems like a lot. As Mark said, it is related to our attendance. It's my understanding that there are no, certainly no double A districts that opt out of this association. And I think that it's important to just kind of note what they do. They advocate to legislators for issues that the members of that association, of which we are one, that we decide on in a very democratic process. And so we meet, well, not we, but the members have representatives that meet, and basically, like I said, they advocate to get legislation passed for other kind of issues. And Anne, if you want to add anything else, you could certainly throw something in there, but I just wanted to put that out there as just part of the discussion, so that we know what we're talking about, what we're voting on.
They provide professional education for us, granted to us for no cost. They also have webinars that you can take. So if you're interested in extending your professionalism here, you can go online and do a webinar. They do a lot of things, and it's really hard to put it all, to capsulize it all. It just... Their advocacy at the legislature is the main thing, which is coming up in this next year. So it's going to be, we have a lot of things on our, from the Delaware Assembly that we are going to project forward to them during, and it will come out in October at the business meeting on Friday morning.
Thanks, Anne.
Is there any additional board discussion? Jennifer?
I just had a question. Do we know, anyone off the top of their head, has there been any dues increase over last year? Yeah?
There is. And I, sorry, I don't have it in front of me, but there's a, it's a, I want to say between 2% and 3%.
Okay.
And I would just mention that I believe we voted on that last October at MTSBA. I would also just indicate, in addition to what trustees have added in terms of the value, participation in MTSBA is the gateway to our insurance programs for unemployment insurance, as well as property...
Work comp.
Work comp, work comp, excuse me. So that's an important benefit for us, too.
Anne?
And not to say this, but we get money in return for our good performance on work comp. Is that not correct?
Actually, in both programs, we pay about $525,000 in work comp premium, and we've have, over the last few years, accumulated about $100,000 in credit, work comp credit that we can apply against the premium, based upon, and it is based upon, performance. So claims performance. And then in the unemployment pool, that's covered through our retirement fund, so we don't see it in the general fund, but that insurance program has also performed very well. And it's a insurance for schools and limited to schools. And they've also issued rebates that benefit directly our taxpayers. So both programs do very well.
One more thing. I have another question. If we were to go out and try to get this kind of coverage elsewhere, outside of MTSBA, the premium would be much higher. Is that not correct?
I would expect it. Our options on the unemployment side is the state fund, essentially, and then on the other side, yeah, I wouldn't... I think it's tough generally with competing with pool insurance programs and ones where you have a track record, so...
It's always for itself.
It's, they're good programs. Yep.
Are there any more other board discussion? Any public comment? Okay, so we have a motion in a second to approve... Do we? Do we have a motion, Lenore?
No.
Oh, okay. Is there a motion to approve renewal of the Montana School Board Association membership? Moved by trustee Newbolt? Second by trustee Sturvis? Thank you. Now, is there any board comment? Any public comment? Okay, all trustees in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand? And that's unanimous as to all trustees present? Okay, the second item is similar. It's renewal of the Montana Quality Education Coalition membership. And again, Superintendent Thane will present about that.
And again, I'll be brief. The MQEC, the group essentially that's funded by school districts across the state, has worked tirelessly to advocate for adequate funding. You'll remember the funding lawsuits that occurred, and this largely spurred the effort of, and the development of MQEC. Again, we heard from Diane Burke, who is the executive director of MQEC in previous years, about Missoula County Public Schools participating. Their primary effort, of course, is legislative action, and we are entering, of course, legislative year in 2019. The invoice that's attached is in the amount of $4,000, which would represent what a double A district would contribute to participate with MQEC. And the administration recommends trustee approval of the renewal of our membership with the Montana Quality Education Coalition.
Okay, do we have any questions for Superintendent Thane? Okay, do we have a motion to approve renewal of the Montana Quality Education Coalition membership? Moved by trustee Wade, second by trustee Decker. Is there any board discussion? Any public comment? Okay, all trustees in favor of approving this motion, please signify by raising your hand? And that's unanimous to all trustees present? Okay, item 9B3 is the discussion about the sale of the Homavale property, and Superintendent Thane will tell you what that is.
I'll actually give most of this agenda item to Pat, I believe. He did the heavy lifting in terms of the information that's in the packet. But directly to the north of us, across South Avenue, is the property that we refer to as the Homavale property. The change in rerouting of South Avenue a number of years ago, I believe 12 years ago now...
Yeah.
Actually, cut through the middle of that property and separated into two parcels. They're approximately 37,000 square feet each. One parcel is undeveloped right now. We're using it for the staging area for the Washington School construction project. The other portion of the parcel has the building we refer to as Casa Loma. Casa Loma was a speakeasy when the airport was located where Spartan Park is presently. We use that building primarily for storage. As you recall, in July, we reacquired the buildings that were formerly the Missoula College, that are directly south of this building. And it's our intent to do some remediation of some hazardous materials, to do some re-roofing, HVAC, and some remodel on those facilities, so that we can unify our administrative and business functions, along with a number of district programs under those roofs. That's going to take an infusion of some resources. And so the proposal we have before you tonight is to initiate the process according to the timeline contained in the packet, to consider the sale of the property we refer to as the Homavale property. And with that, I'll turn it over to Pat, and he can get into some of the legal aspects.
All right, so this is the introduction to this concept, and what you'll hear about in the next several board meetings, anyway, is the process. And we've attached a proposed or contemplated timeline on page 53, along with, on page 54, a more recent cost market analysis. It's probably a little difficult to see, but you can see the two different parcels that were created by the division through the property by the right-of-way. And then within those two parcels, the northwest and the southwest, or southwest and the northeast parcels, the various estimates of value based upon a realtor's cost market analysis. The, and we have obviously more detail there with respect to the property. This property was at one time linked to the conveyance of the Missoula College facilities when the state statute changed and conveyed the vocational program obligation from high school, county high schools, to the colleges. And the ownership interest of the university was ultimately eventually purchased and bought out. And at present time, there's, remains a small obligation to the university following that purchase. So title sits with the university, with MCPs in total. The settlement agreement that was entered into, I believe, was in 2005 or 2006. At that time, there were two appraisals performed on the property. The one that was used to determine value for purchases of purchase was about $1 million, about $954,000. And you can see from these cost market analysis that the estimate's a little over $1 million now. Within the context of the proposal, what we would do is contract with an appraiser to have the property appraised again. And this information would be useful for the board in evaluating and making a decision. It would also be useful if we, if the board chooses to go down the path of a sale. What we would recommend, and it's referenced in the background section, is that the sale be contemplated or consummated via a resolution, so that the board of trustees have authority to adopt a resolution authorizing the sale by making a finding that the property is unsuitable for school purposes. The statute is actually obsolete, undesirable, or unsuitable for school purposes. This property has never been used for school purposes, other than to store property that's also unsuitable for school purposes. And then we use it to house, or to hold the auction for the sale of that property. Most recently, the property was used by the Missoula College for parking for their students. And as Mark mentioned, the most use that's been used by us really has been the staging for the Washington construction, and then the Conex boxes for some additional storage. So the steps, or the timeline that's outlined on page 53 is really dependent upon a couple of things, so it obviously can change. So if you see the July 10th next board meeting, if the board were to discuss and adopt a resolution authorizing the sale, it would also involve the resolution making a finding that the property is unsuitable or undesirable. And that resolution would be published and would be posted, much like we do for our voted liberties. And it wouldn't take effect for 14 days by statute. We had put on this timeframe, July 30th, even though that's beyond the 14 days, if the board were to adopt the resolution, as the date it would become effective, it actually becomes effective a little bit sooner. We also indicated initiation of an RFP process. I don't think we would go down that RFP process, well, of course, without board direction and approval, but also without an appraisal. I think you'll want to evaluate based upon the appraisal. I haven't determined timeframes when that work could be done, but we would certainly recommend that we not release an RFP without first obtaining an appraisal. I think that that's all I was going to talk about, just in terms of the background. I can provide more detail about the property. It was acquired via contract for deed back in the early '70s. It was actually originally attempted to be purchased under a contract for deed by an educational incorporation. The W.J. Gallagher bought out that contract based upon default, and then he donated the property, or donated the contract to the school district, and the contract made payments till about 1994, I believe it was. During that period of time, the Gallaghers also donated sporadic times the funds on occasion that were used to help make the purchase of lots 1 through 22. The district on its own purchased lots 23 through 24. And then, as mentioned, the property basically sat until after the right-of-way was initiated in 2004, and the university approached MCPs about their interest in the property, interest in the right-of-way, and that led to the settlement in 2005 or 2006. And essentially, the buyout of the university's interest as the vocational technical operator at that point in time. So the property is, and I haven't looked at a title report since that settlement agreement, but it should be free and clear.
Do we have any board questions or comments? Mike?
Thanks, Pat. I'm looking forward to having an open discussion, a clear discussion about how we move forward with this being a real property that is owned by the district. I think it's important that we certainly have that discussion before we make any decisions. And as you made clear in your statements, it's maybe not as clear in the way that this is worded on page 53, but you know, this posting the resolution of authorizing the sale, that has yet to be determined. So we, and if it's my understanding that today, and obviously, again, on the 10th of July, we will have discussions among the board to kind of decide, as a board, which we were going to move forward, correct?
That's right, and it's important that that's noted as sort of the initiation of the timeframes, because the sale by resolution requires a determination within the resolution that the property's unsuitable for school purposes. And absent that finding, the property is sold by voter approval. So this functions as an exception to voter approval of sale when there's, when the board makes a finding of obsolete...
If we determine that it is obsolete, unsuitable, undesirable, et cetera, any one of those, then we can then move forward with the process as we adhere, if we want to do that, if we in fact do want to sell.
Correct.
Well, I also just wanted to add that I'm glad that we're... Well, I also just wanted to add that I'm glad that we're looking at this as a vehicle to fund some of the expenses that are associated with the Missoula College. I think real property, freehold property is, and capital investments and stuff, I think this is a prudent way to do it. It certainly would save us from having to go back to the taxpayers and asking for an increase in their, or some kind of building levy to address the clear and obvious issues that we have in moving into some of the older buildings that we're getting from Missoula College. So, I guess that being said, I, a question that I have is, and I don't know if this is relevant or not, but even I wasn't on the board in 2006, when that road came through, believe it or not. When that happened, did we own the property at that time? And when that road came through, did we get compensated for it as a district? Is that how that worked? And what happened to those funds, I guess? Or would they just reset back into buildings or whatever?
Right. So, we held title to the property. The ownership interest that was claimed by the university was related back to when the Missoula College and the vocational programs went from the Missoula College, sorry, Missoula High School District to the college. And the link to the home veil property was really a reference within minutes that the, that that conveyance would be taken care of at a later date. And so, there wasn't any title, or there wasn't any interest on the title or on the deed by the university, but it was linked more to that conveyance, and what was promised and didn't happen. The right-of-way happened, of course, independent of the ownership interest, but the school district received about $240,000 in right-of-way proceeds. And then, when the settlement essentially provided for a 30% ownership interest by the University of Montana, the appraisal was about $950,000, so 30% of that, along with the right-of-way proceeds, totaled about $362,000 that went to the university. We used the right-of-way proceeds to pay the bulk of that, and leaves us with a balance of about $130,000. $162,000, then we got a deduct for the use of the softball fields at 30, so we're at $130,000 right now.
Okay. You're starting to lose me with all the numbers. I think what I was trying to look for, and I think he answered it, is back in the day, there was an appraisal, it was about $950,000. Now, we're looking at, based on, we don't know when it's going to come back, but the numbers on here is a little over a million, but that doesn't count the $250,000 that was, so I'm just kind of trying to track the value. The property has...
Appreciated?
Appreciated, thank you.
Yeah. It would appear, based upon those appraisals, it appreciated leading up to the settlement as well. I mean, there's at least two appraisals leading up to that.
And I guess the final comment I'll make is that this is clearly, in the real estate market today, it's clearly a seller's market. We have the advantage, at least for this property, if we decide to sell it, of selling it without having to replace it. And like, if I was a homeowner, I could say it's a seller's market, I could sell my house, but I still have to buy a house to live in. We don't have that situation here, so.
Right. And you referenced an important point, which is the reinvestment of value. I mean, reinvestment of value in property that we own.
We have, Anne, go ahead.
Number one, I'd like to know, are these two separate pieces of property at this point in time? And then, the second thing, was it rezoned when they did the right, when they did all the changes over there to not being a residential, but more like a commercial? Is it, and the number three is, is it part of the URD that's presently over here as part of the mall? And number four, you're saying there's still an outstanding balance on it, is that correct?
Yes, so, four to one. There is still an outstanding obligation. It's not secured by the property, and that's about $130,000, less what credit will receive from the university for the period of time that their students parked on our property. So, it's going to be less than 130, but somewhere in that ballpark. It is part of the tax increment financing district, the more recent one. It, zoning, I do not recall the zoning, it's, but it's not residential. The zoning is pretty broad. And I can pull that up for you, but I don't have it off the top of my head. What was the first question?
Are they two separate properties?
Oh, they're two separate legal descriptions. And one property within those, it's essentially a block, and it contains 24 lots. So, it was at least conveyed at one time in the form of lots. And now, it exists in two separate parcels, two separate legal descriptions, based upon the right-of-way.
Okay, so now, I have another question. So, then, we would get an appraisal on each set of properties, are we going to sell them as a whole?
What I likely look at is both. I think that you could look at both, but selling the entire combined property. It's potential that it could be sold in two separate, to two separate purchasers.
Okay. So, you'd get the zoning information, right?
Yeah.
Okay, any other, Jennifer?
Are you aware of any precedent for the unsuitable, undesirable, obsolete? Have, has a board in recent history, or not so recent history, made such a determination?
Yeah, good question. I had a conversation with Megan about that just today, and not with any precedent in mind, but her belief that with respect to this property would be, fall very keenly within that unsuitable for school purposes, given its past history. I think that, past history of not being used by the school, in effect. It's the fact that the proposed use that we had contemplated was the Willard Alternative School, and they said, "No, thank you," and have gone a different direction. And the fact that it hasn't operated as a school in any recent past. I mean, I think that, you know, it may look differently when we're, if we were talking about property that was used as a school.
Any other questions? Did you have one, Vicky?
It's not right for here, right?
Yeah. Okay, Grace?
Thanks. So, we, in pursuing this process, we would be looking into an appraisal before we would actually make that determination about whether we would be moving forward toward sale, correct? So, we'd get that appraisal. And what is that appraisal going to involve? I know we've had a lot of conversation about leasing as well as selling. I know that leasing a property doesn't necessarily give you the big chunk of money in hand, but are we able to get a wide variety of options gathered for us to use to make that kind of decision?
I think we could. I mean, I think we certainly could ask for valuations based upon long-term leases versus valuations based upon sale. Hopefully, an appraiser would be able to provide some insider advice.
Any more trustee questions? Heidi?
Just thinking out loud a little bit, these are sort of oddly shaped lots, but they're a pretty good size, and it, you know, one of the things that crosses my mind when I'm thinking about this, that I think the community would be concerned about it, and we would also, as a district, is, you know, what happens if it turns into some kind of, you know, retail use that would be, that would be not okay as a former school property, and as one that's close to a high school, and that sort of thing. And to the, I'm trying to formulate a question out of this. Would we be able to, and this is kind of along the lines of what Grace was asking, can we ask for, you know, certain restrictions on the use? Or is that just determined by zoning? Would we have any, you know, right of refusal to sell, you know, that sort of thing?
You know, it's an interesting question, and really, in thinking about what the RFP would look like if we went that route, we would have, or you would have, as trustees, some ability to formulate the, what you're looking for in terms of valuing a response. It will be tough not to have price be the primary consideration. It's also possible with the property, even before you list it, because we own it, to impose covenants or restrictions that you might want to run with the land. I think that would be a good discussion with our attorney when we get to that point. And I think that certainly the formulation of the RFP will take some thinking. And the good thing about, you know, if we did go that route, because it doesn't have to be, obviously, I'm getting ahead of myself, but the RFP, much like much of the bidding or procurement that we've done to this point, you know, we can set some of the parameters. And in a real estate sale, it can be as-is, it can be, it can not allow contingencies for financing, and so you can, you know, and we could identify the contractual language that we would accept, so that it's in our favor, and then it could also include, I would expect, some of what the board might want to consider in terms of prospective purchasers.
I would just make one addition with regard to covenants. We learned on the previous sale of a property where a covenant was attached, that there's no one that enforces covenants. Unless there's a homeowners association, then it's basically words on a piece of paper that nobody wishes to tackle.
Any other board comments or questions? Oh, go ahead, Vicky.
Yeah, I just, you know, kind of want to go streamline along with that. I would certainly hate to see a bar, or a casino, or, you know, something like that to be built across the street. And if we don't have a say in that, that's just, I just, that just doesn't seem right to me, to have it open for something like that to be built across the street from a high school.
And then, there's Hellgate. So, Mike?
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to note that while that is a good sentiment, that we should be concerned with, you know, what may go there, I think we have to associate the cost of trying to control that. We certainly don't control the lot right next to it, which is a church right now, but they could up tomorrow and sell out to whatever. We have no control over that, this is a free country, and, you know, you can put whatever you want, as long as you fall within the legal uses of the land, et cetera, et cetera. So, I think it's important to consider, and I think it's a good question to ask, but I want to make sure that we keep it in perspective, and if we, if our intention is to get the value that is going to save the taxpayers the most money in the future, we weigh all the options, I guess, is what I want to say.
Are there any other, Grace?
Are we, are we asking questions? Can we just say things?
Yeah, you can just say things.
Okay. Bang, bang, where's the cattle? So, if I were just saying things, I want to say that one of the things is this unsuitable for school purposes and so on, that's a really interesting category of designation for a piece of land that's based on, like, today. It's based on right now, it's based on what we think of now. And there are some properties that have been considered for school purposes, like the one up in the hills before, that, like, the slant of it and the slope of it make it really a difficult spot to build on. So, that's, you know, that's different than a perfectly flat, perfectly level, perfectly downtown piece of open land. And so, I don't know, I guess I just, it's important to me that we, as Diane has said many times in the past, but I want to know what all of our options are, being not opposed to sale in all cases, but really wanting to think, you know, 50 or 80 years from now, will people look at, you know, the crumbling casino that's on that piece of land, and wonder why the school district didn't build that fabulous alternative high school there? Just a thought.
Oops. Okay, any other trustee questions or comments? Mike Smith?
I'll just tack on to what Grace said. I think that's a really important point. And before I continue my comment, Pat, could you please repeat the undesirable, what's the legal jargon?
Obsolete, unsuitable, or undesirable.
Obsolete, unsuitable for school, or undesirable. Okay. And while we cannot pretend to know what will happen 50 years from now, and I think the lot up on 55th and Whittaker is a perfect example. 60 years ago, or whatever, when they purchased that, there was no, there was no protected lands around that, so they didn't know whether or not there was going to be houses all the way up there or not. And we don't know what's going to happen, but I think that's a good point that you make, Grace. I just want to say that I think what we're going to have to do is weigh our evaluation in the lens of what we see now, and that's about all we can do. I mean, we, as a board, act as this particular board for this body that we are. Next year, five years, any board could undo whatever, you know, we happen to do, and whatever we make. And I think that we all do strive to do the best for, to uphold the ethics that Pat read earlier at the other meeting. So, I guess, not much more than just keeping it in perspective.
Sure.
Whenever the trustees of a district determine that a site, building, or any other real or personal property of the district is, or is about to become abandoned, I miss the word abandoned, abandoned, obsolete, undesirable, or unsuitable for the school purpose of, the school purposes of the district, the trustees may sell or otherwise dispose.
Okay, and then, I think we also could look at Missoula zoning laws. I don't think they protect schools, but we could look at the zoning laws, see if there's some, some language about what can be built close to schools. Bring that back next. Are there any other, oh, Jennifer?
I think just a quick one. What's the cost of maintaining that property right now?
We have very little on utilities. The recent improvement to that property was a roof, because it was coming down. And the inside of the facility is, has water damage from when the roof, prior to when the roof was repaired. It's in pretty poor shape, very little maintenance cost. We've not done much to that building, other than the roof. Barely is that bare.
We've done some minor floor repair as well, that was, had rotten away from that, from the leaky roof. That's pretty much it.
Okay, I think, oh, go ahead, Vicky.
Are we going to come to, is there going to be something that's going to bring, brought to the board stating what deems it as being undesirable? I mean, I, I realize that the building that's on it right now is, you know, kind of undesirable, but I can't, I can't, and I kind of have sentimental values towards that Project 100, but, but I guess I don't understand it being undesirable if it was tore down and we could use it for, you know, for putting another building, because I know that chances are, 15 years down the line, the school, you know, we're going to expand, you know, the school's going to need additional, additional buildings and such, and I guess I'm just thinking that, you know, why, why sell it? I can't understand where it would be undesirable if we tore everything down and put something up that we could use.
Jennifer?
Can you remind us why Willard declined or did not desire that location?
I might have to defer on that one.
I think largely it was that property had more of a commercial feel to it, and the way the road bisected the property was an issue, and they liked the neighborhood feel of their current location. So, there was an expressed interest on the part of the students and staff to remain where they were. And if I may diverge for just a minute with regard to suitability or unsuitability, I think that one of the questions we'll need to ask ourselves is about all our property holdings in this immediate area. We have significant acreage here between the Sentinel Site, the Stagner area, all the playfields, et cetera. And one of the questions might be, is it unsuitable simply because of the amount of property we have here? And would it, in all likelihood, be necessary for us to use it? for us to use it for school purposes? And again, that may be more of a legal question, if that's an appropriate rationale, but I think that's part of what my thinking has been, is that we have significant holdings here that should have enough capacity for our school needs for the foreseeable future.
And I guess I'd like to make a comment. I think our timeline is a little too compressed on this, because right now we're asking for a lot of information. If we were to follow this timeline, we would actually be voting at the next meeting, and I just, I feel like this is a really important conversation, and we should see, see the resolution as a draft in one meeting and vote in another meeting, and so I'd like to see this timeline moved. And I know our August meeting is maybe not a good place, so we're kind of pushing into September for that.
Yeah, that's fine. I think that, I think the appraisal is probably out a bit itself. It, I, I think that the, it's more a matter of timing and when the marketability of property is for, for sale purposes, but it's, it's at your pace for sure.
And I would just add, I would echo Pat's comments. I don't know that this is necessarily time sensitive, but our intent tonight was to get this in front of the public. And I would indicate to you that there has been, again, some discussion, because we have publicly had conversation about our interest in moving into the Missoula College Building, and that's caused some conversation among adjacent property owners about the future of the property across the street. As early as this, last week, I was approached by an individual wanting to know the status of the Hovale property and if the board would enter into conversation. So, right now, it's part of the tax increment financing district, which may make it appealing to people. I think as we consider where interest rates are, now's a good time to sell. I think the other interest is that there's very little shuttle, shovel-ready property available in Missoula, and certainly in the core, which might make it attractive. So, there's not any time sensitivity to it, but I think part of it is capitalizing while the market conditions are appropriate.
And I guess, you know, I've always been fundamentally concerned that we would sell a piece of property, but I also realize that we, we need cash to protect the value of our other properties, that if we don't have any cash, we're going to see deterioration of other properties, and so we'll just, you know, I, I like the fact that we're considering this property and this property only, because I believe it belongs to the secondary district. Is that correct? So, you know, typically, I just, I'm, I'm very concerned, but in this case, that some, I do think we need cash to protect other properties, so it is something, I'm glad we're considering this, I know, whatever our timeline is. Mike?
So, I question them about process for you, Diane, I think, or maybe Mark. Are we, are we voting on anything tonight, or are we approving anything? Okay, so the, the appraisal is already going to be requested, that, that, we're not going to hold that up or anything like that, right? And we don't have, we, we don't have to approve this timeline or anything, this is just recommended. Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, I think I did not make a short meeting, Mark. Okay, moving on to item four, it's the budget update information only, and I, is that both districts, Pat?
Yes, both districts. So, this is on page 55 in your packet, and this is, this is the, not quite the latest information, and the reason is, is last week, on Friday, we received some information from OPI regarding our A and B count, and we were, we have an A and B adjustment of three, which will lower the budget on the high school side by about $17,000. So, that, that, if you look at the, and you've, you, you guys have all seen these budget projections, sorry, not everyone, Sharon, but the, yeah, you've seen them. The, I, I'm kind of buzzing to the bottom line. The, the, on the secondary side, we would see a lowering of that budget by about $17,000, and then increasing the deficit down below as a result. The, the bottom line, where we're looking at the reduction savings and other offsets, this is the, the bottom quadrant here, we're proposing a number of one-time only uses of resources to bolster the high school side, just given the, the state it's in, and you can see the budget balance before other adds and reductions in order to negative about 245. We have a work comm credit, I mentioned that early, and, earlier, and I'm, I'm putting that into the mix to help balance. We have Medicaid funds, we receive some Medicaid reimbursements, I'm also putting that into the mix. And then Adult Ed rents some of our space for some of their fee-based programs, this is just talking about charging a similar rate to what we had charged in, in fee rental to what we had charged to other groups that, that do fee-based work in our school. We're moving some tech costs that are currently in the general fund to the tech fund. This area's gone both ways in the past. And then, no numbers attached to it, but a 10% holdback on the discretionary, discretionary allocation in the high school. And, and those sort of ideas are also listed as an interlocal agreement, which, which we've entered into in the past to, to help get us over the hump and to balance. So, we still have some work to do, but this is actually progress, it doesn't look great, but it is progress. And the high school is, is just a, are the trouble spot from a budget standpoint. Finally, I just mentioned that data for achievement, that's the very last line, that's not incorporated in those balances, I'm just identifying it, it's something that we would anticipate covering through savings and other areas of the budget. This is that Senate Bill 261, piece of funding component that exists to calculate the budget, but they're not providing the revenue of the state, that is, so, just listed there for, for purposes of getting a full picture. That's, that's all I had, just on that budget update.
Are there any trustee questions for Pat? Okay, is there a public comment? All right. And then we'll talk about the elementary transportation fund amendment resolution, and the similar for the high school. That's Pat again.
Yeah, so, this is the resolution piece to the budget amendment. The board adopted proclamation already, and so this is the time and date set to adopt the resolution. On the elementary side, it's a budget amendment of $138,000 in the transportation fund, pulled entirely from reserves. This would help cover an anticipated shortfall in budget based upon increased transportation expenditures. Those expenditures were tied to the, the final beach contract being a little more than what was anticipated when we adopted the budget, additional route, and then the cost of MBI training for beach transportation staff. So, that's the elementary side. Do you want me to?
Yeah.
And the, the high school, similar rationale for the increase primarily tied to the beach contract, and then the MBI training for beach staff, and that proposed amendment is $30,000, which would also be pulled from transportation fund reserves.
Okay, do we have any questions from either the elementary or the high school amendment? Heidi?
This is a question for both elementary and high school, and just for a sense of context, how many bus rides do we provide every year, or, you know, in, in whatever way is the best way to describe that to us?
How about daily? So, we, of course, undertook a transportation study with Transfinder, and they did a lot of data work for us last spring, and from that report, it indicates that on any given day, we transport approximately 1,190 K5 students, approximately 860 students in grade six through eight, and approximately 1,106 high school students, so nearly 3,000 students per day. That's out of an enrollment of about 9,000 students.
Are there any other questions from trustees? Okay, so, do we have a motion from an elementary trustee to approve the budget amendment resolution in the amount of $138,000 for the elementary transportation fund? Move by Mike Smith? Second by Heidi Kendall? Is there any discussion amongst trustees? Okay, is there any public comment? Okay, all trustees in favor of the, of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to the elementary trustees? Do we have a, a motion from any trustee to approve the budget amendment for the high school transportation fund of $30,000? Moved by trustee McDonald? Is there a second? Second by trustee, Sturvis, thank you, that's getting late. Are there, is there any discussion amongst the trustees? Any public comment? All trustees in favor of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees present. Item seven, we grant permission to seek quotes for network switches. Pat will talk to us about that.
All right, so, this is a purchasing practice that we've done before, which is to use the cooperative purchasing programs for which we participate. Here, we're asking the, for permission from the board to seek quotes from the WISKA-NASBO program. This is a program we've used to purchase Juniper switches, so it, it's, it's not a formal bid, instead, it's, it's a recognized means of making purchases, and, and we'll put together the, the quotes, or the request for quotes from those organizations and the vendors within those organizations. So, that bidding part has already happened at the WISKA-NASBO level. So, the switches we're looking for will be for Washington, Jeanette Rankin, Russell, Willard, and Hellgate High School.
Are there any questions for Pat? Do we have a motion to grant permission to seek quotes for the switches using the cooperative program? Moved by Ann, trustee Ann Wake, second by trustee Newbold. Is there any board discussion? Is there any public comment? All trustees in favor of the rec, of the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And that's unanimous as to all trustees present. Well, finally, we, there's our public. Okay, finally, we have item eight, to authorize engagement of Big Sky High School general contractor, and Burley will talk to us about that.
As I always like to do, I'd like to thank our committee, and then I kind of want to just kind of brief, quick rundown of how we go amongst the selection, as we have a new trustee, it might be good information for her to have. The committee consisted of Superintendent Thane, Pat McHugh, principal, Jennifer Courtney, and regional director Karen Allen, and myself. The way the selection for this, for the general contractor works is, we put out in public notice for, for two weeks for an RFQ, request for qualifications. We then take those qualifications, and the committee scores them as a pass/fail, whether or not they're qualified for this kind of project, whether they're qualified to deliver this sort of project with this, as a general contractor, construction manager. We take those that are qualified, and we, we have them respond to a RFP or request for proposal, which includes their approach to the project, as well as costs involved to manage that project. Those two areas get scored separately worth 100 points each, and then we invite up to four of those, those firms back for interviews, and that interview is worth another 100 points, so it's total 300 points. The firm that scores the highest comes before you as a recommendation. Today, we're recommending Jackson Contracting Group for Big Sky High School, and we're looking forward to work with them. Unfortunately, they were not here to be, not able to be here tonight, but they are very excited about the project as well. This pro, we're, we're bringing this, excuse me, out a little earlier than most of our other projects. We're getting a little wiser as we go down this road, but we feel it's going to be very beneficial to helping us with selecting good materials, budgeting process, you know, they become a partner at the table with the design, so I could tell you architects are very excited as well. The timeline loosely is to start construction in winter-spring of next year, a little bit different than what we've had in the past, where we're kind of starting in the summer, so we're planning to get a little bit quicker jump on this project. Any questions?
I don't have a microphone. Go ahead, Sharon. Oh, here. Obviously, I'm interested in Big Sky. What exactly are you going to be doing? Because I'm kind of new to this, as you say, so, first of all, were you talking about winter-spring, you're talking about 2019, or 2020?
2019.
2019.
Yes.
So, is it, is it the cafeteria, is it, what exactly is it that's going to happen at Big Sky?
So, currently, it's in real early, so they started doing programming in May, which means the architects start to sit down with an EIT team, it's an education innovative team, apologize for all the acronyms, and that's a team of teachers, staff, community members, administrators, that kind of sit down with the architects, and they go through what their, what their project needs to look like. The project's basically was voted on by, by voters, so there is some specific things that we have to make sure we cover. One is addressing the, the theater, cafeteria, there is some site work, there's some deferred maintenance, there's some safety work, there's some technology, but for the most part, I think what you'll see is you'll see a new entry, where that exists current, if, how it's going to work, because that's part of the security.
Right.
You know, you walk into Big Sky right now, and it's kind of like free rein, so you'll see, you'll see kind of a, a new entryway, and you'll see a new cafeteria, a common space, and you'll see a new, however they work that theater process. I know that the architects are really working on how they can connect the building together to and make it flow better, so right now you have all those inner cores that kind of really are unusable space that, you know, I know the teachers have been really creative in how they use it, storage, but they've had some, they do some breakout, breakout work in there as well, so they've been pretty creative on how they use it, but we want to kind of open that up and create that flow a little bit better.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Oh, Mike?
More of a general question for you, Burley, and I know we're, we're near the end of this process, and I, I guess I want to point out that I appreciate the, the work of all the review teams that you've put together, and I know Mark, I think, has been on, Mark and Pat, and you, Burley, have probably been on every one of them. I also want to thank Eric for sitting through every one of these meetings, he always gets the last thing, I don't know how this happens to you, Eric. Just briefly, without going into any detail, but, I mean, I think what has happened through the process and through, not, not because we wanted to, but I think one of the benefits that has come out of the process is kind of spreading out of the work. I know Jackson's working on other projects for us, but could you speak a little bit to, at least from the GCCM, and maybe even from the architect thing? Or, or maybe you can come back at a later date and say, look, at the end of the bond projects, we employed six architects, four GCCMs, you know, I don't, I don't need to know how many plumbers, because it's just going to go all over, out the table, but, but I, I think one of the things that'd be good to come back to the taxpayers with is say, look, you guys approved $150 million worth of bond, that we made our schools better, we, 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 we were able to spread it out, we were able to get a, got a good work done, kind of like that. So, I feel I'm rambling, and everybody wants to get out of here by 8 o'clock, I'm sure, so, zip it up, Mike, and.
Yeah, there's really no, there's no really rhyme or reason of what we try to do. We try to make the process as fair and legitimate as it possibly can. It has fortunately worked out very, very good for, for numerous contractors, numerous architects, numerous subcontractors. I will say that on our website, we have, under the bond tab, we have a partners tab, and then there, it tells you all of our partners for each project. And so, if you want to go on there and look at it, you can kind of see how that's all been, spread out a little bit, yeah, so, but you're right, I mean, it has been spread out, and we're happy about that, and I'm sure the community as well.
That's good, and, and just saying that is enough for me, you don't have to come back with anything else. I appreciate it, thank, that's already taken care of.
Okay, do we have any?
I'm done.
Are there any other questions or comments? Is there any public comment? Oh, yeah, Eric. And, oh, I'm sorry, we don't have a motion yet.
Eric Holting, owner's representative?
Eric, can you wait a second until we get a motion? Just wait there.
Oh, sorry.
Do we have a motion to approve the selection?
Do we have a motion to approve the selection of Jackson Contracting? So, moved by trustee Newbold, second by trustee Wake. Any board discussion? Okay, any public comment?
Thank you. Eric Holting, owner's representative, I just wanted to respond to your question, Mike, as I'm working on a lot of fun facts and figures that I'll be presenting at the upcoming board meeting.
upcoming board meeting. So it'll address your questions as to how, how many different contractors we had, how many different architects we had. And there's a lot of other facts and figures that are pretty impressive, actually. This, everyone's done this wonderful job here and so supportive. But you'll be, you'll be excited to hear some of these things we're coming up with. Well, thank you. I'm looking forward to it.
So I'll add my public comment. Tomorrow at 8:00 AM in this room, we will actually interview our last set of contractors, those for the Porter project. And they'll be coming before the board for approval at the next board meeting.
That's the next one, July 10. Fourth of July's next week. Okay, I think, do we have any public comment on non-agenda items?
We didn't vote on that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know how Marcia does this. Okay. We have a motion on the table. All trustees in favor of approving the motion, please signify by raising your hand. And that's unanimous, all trustees present. Okay, now do we have public comment on non-agenda items? And we are adjourned.